Go ahead and get started.
Let me go ahead and start the webinar.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one Governing Board Study Session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our first item for discussion is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty two budget discussion. And we have an hour set aside for this, and then we have an hour set aside for the draft mission fulfillment framework. So so we my goal is to really keep us on track and start the the discussion on the fulfillment framework at five. I know there was a lot of community interest. We've received some communication, so I just want to let anybody watching know that that's our intention. Unless we finish this item early, we we will be starting that at around five. Chancellor Lambert.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. And yes, Mr. Chair, we're very pleased to be able to share with you an important part of our budget development process, looking at some of the challenges we face and discussing some revenue projections and some of the expenditures that we see going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dave B. to take us through the presentation.
All right. Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on one second. I gotta change my screen a little bit. All right, can you see my screen still? Okay, that's better. Now I can actually maneuver it. Before, I got stuck where I could see it, but I couldn't maneuver it. Good afternoon, Chairperson Klinko, members of the board, Chancellor Lambert, colleagues and guests. As Chancellor Lambert mentioned, this is an opportunity for us to go over, give an update on the various key budget parameters, talk to the board about some of the priorities, some of the challenges that we're going to be facing. And really, it's a study session, so this is an opportunity for the board to give feedback in terms of the board's priorities, how they want to see the budget come together. In some ways, this is a very unique year. Well, in lots of ways, obviously, I think that goes without saying, but it's from a budgeting standpoint, it's also a unique year. And I'll sort of walk through why that's the case and how it will play out a little bit differently than in the past. So we'll start with the ongoing challenges. We'll get into revenue and expenditures and then sort of talk about Carissa funds and funds coming from the federal government and how that's going to impact the budget as we go through the budget development season this year. The first slide, and I know that you've seen this ahead of time, and I don't need to go through it too much and belabor exactly what it says. But our biggest challenge and our ongoing challenge has been for a number of years, and particularly now, is the decline in enrollment. It is the college's priority to get our enrollment back up, to not only back to where it was pre-COVID, but start building back up from there. So it our enrollment is down from a FTSE standpoint, year over year, about eighteen percent. On top of that, we've talked in multiple sessions in the last few months about the different changes to our revenue picture and and projections. Our other revenues, there are a number of them that are declining and will continue to decline. We've talked about auxiliary revenues. Yep.
Sorry, can you make it a little bit bigger?
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's interesting, huh? Okay. Okay, now I've got both. I've got the bigger screen. I've solved the problem from beginning. I've got the bigger screen and I can now maneuver it. So there we go, big win. Okay, sorry about that. The looking at the enrollment picture is obviously the biggest problem. But the other problem we have, and it's it's compounded or it's it's related to enrollment, which is the structural challenges we have, having so many facilities, having this lower level of enrollment spread out and the size of our staffing. And we've talked about this, we've been working on it, and we've been pretty successful the last number of years. Reallocating the resources, being more efficient with the space utilization by leasing out some of the space, by eliminating the community campus and selling that facility. But as enrollment has gone down, we are overall still not operating at a peak efficiency. And the goal is to get our enrollment back up and that we have capacity to enable us to handle that increase, the hopeful increase in enrollment. But we will continue to work on our efficiencies going forward, and that's classroom efficiencies in terms of our scheduling. And then the challenge of providing all services at all locations and the expectation of that and how we're delivering services, so being more efficient delivering services electronically or digitally and that sort of thing, without having a service degradation is part of what we need to do going forward. We always are challenged with limited resources. I'm going to walk through some of the limitations in our resources going forward. And then, as I've mentioned, and as we know, what we need to do is shift our resources from programs and services that we aren't providing anymore, or there's not as much demand for them, towards the areas of growth. And we're doing that with the Centers of Excellence and with Pima Online in particular are the big growth areas that we're seeing that. We're going to continue to try and find ways to reallocate the resources in that way. So that's an ongoing challenge. I want to start out talking about expenditure limitation, because there is there are some elements to this that that are still relevant. But mostly, this is a good a good situation. We've resolved or and and the Proposition forty one has resolved the key challenge. I just want to point out what the key challenge was. So what this chart shows is the changes in our expenditure limitation, that's what the columns are, over the last ten years, along with the actual expenses that get tied to expenditure limitation, that's the orange line. And then the gray line is the amount of tax-based revenues that we get. So there are a few points that I want to absolutely make make clear on this. So you can see there are the the bar charts, the the bars, the columns are color-coded. Those show the different points in time. So blue indicates when it was before the Senate Bill thirteen twenty two passed. That changed the enrollments instead of being based on estimates to be based on actuals. The first three years of that, that's the sort of golden color, is when there was a ten-year lookback period. The gray column, which is what the current year, the year that we're currently in, is when the ten-year provision went away, because it was a three-year sunsetting provision of thirteen twenty two. And that switched to actual enrollments that were based on a rolling five-year average. And you can see the huge drop off. That was the thing that we had to plan on over the last number of years to get our expenditures in line with that. Now, as you can see, and this is what we've been talking with the board since COVID hit, is our actual expenses, the projected actual expenses, remember, that's the orange line. We've always been under our expenditure limitation, but if you look at what fiscal year twenty one is, our our expenditure limit is dropping dramatically to about eighty seven million dollars, and our expenses are going up. That's largely not because we turned around and just padded our budget and we're spending more. It's we have revenues that are outside of expenditure limitations that are dropping. So our tuition revenue is dropping, our investment earnings are dropping, our auxiliary revenues are dropping. So these other revenues that otherwise take away those expenditure limitation expenses, now those get counted against the property taxes. And so that's what makes that go up. So in the current year, we're looking at a problem that's about ten million dollars. We have carry forward for that. There's sort of two solutions to this. One is that we can use accumulated carry forward from the the last number of years, from from years years past, when we've been underneath the limitation. And then there's also statutory, there's the Arizona Community Colleges are pitching legislation that will, for three years timeframe, not only increase the expenditure limitations going forward, increase the weightings and some of the the technical elements to it. But more importantly, there's a provision that says, starting in fiscal year twenty one, that if if community colleges exceed their expenditure limitation, there will be only a penalty of a hundred dollars. So this could be a non-issue, this fact that we're over by ten million dollars. If it doesn't pass, we will use carry forward and then we move into the forty one world, where you can see Proposition forty one substantively changes what our base limit is, which means that our expenditure limitation goes up significantly. It will be just about a hundred and forty million dollars. We will not have an expenditure limitation problem with our budget. But one of the things that I want to make clear, and the reason that that gray line is there, is that doesn't all of a sudden create new revenues. That just means that we can spend revenues that we already have and that we have more capacity, and we don't have this this nightmare situation where we have to just cut our budget dramatically. So we avoided a massive reduction and gave ourselves flexibility to grow in the in the future. It doesn't just have a huge inflow of money. It gives us flexibility and avoids catastrophe, basically. Okay. Now, moving forward, in a normal year, what we do with the budget is we we come to the board about this timeframe, and we talk about, okay, here's what we expect our revenues to be growing, and here's what we expense expect in terms of our commitments and putting aside some money for compensation and salary increases. So we talk about it in terms of an incremental budget. We usually take that and we say, okay, property taxes are going up by two million dollars. If we do the property tax levy increase of two percent, that's another two million dollars roughly. And then we have maybe other revenues, maybe we're expecting another million dollars. So you have an increase in revenues of five million dollars. And then we say, okay, so our contracts and licenses are going to go up by a million, and our health insurance is going to go up by half a million, and we have retirement increased costs of about a million dollars. And and then we net those. And then oftentimes, what we're doing at this point in the year is saying, okay, in order to do anything more than this base level, to keep operations going as they are, we need to talk about a tuition increase. It's the one variable, it's the one revenue source that we have that's sort of at at our discretion and can compensate. So in a normal budget, what I'd say is that what we're looking at is our additional revenues because of our lost revenues from tuition and these other revenues. We're talking about our revenues are going down about six million dollars, and our base expenses are going up about four million dollars. So we've got a we would, in a normal year, be talking about this unfortunate situation where we're about ten million dollars year over year, worse off than we were the budget year prior. This year's a little bit different, though, because we've got this a couple of other things that are happening, and and those numbers that I just mentioned are real. So I'll talk about, I just want to run through the different revenues. So just for reference sake, and we're gonna all get back to tuition in a second, but for reference sake, if we add a dollar of tuition, a dollar per credit hour, that increases the revenue by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The board, some of the board members may remember that that number, that incremental add for a dollar tuition used to be quite a bit more, it used to be five hundred or five fifty. That's because we have fewer credit hours, we have our enrollment has dropped. So at the enrollment levels that we're talking about now, we're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per additional one dollar of tuition. Okay, property taxes, the growth in new property, this is an actual number, this is new since we've last talked, is about one point three million dollars. So that's money that, without increasing the tax levy, it's what's called the levy neutral, is just from new properties that have come on to the tax rolls, the college will receive one point three million dollars without a tax increase. That moving down, the next one down is the governor's budget, and the initial proposed budget includes four hundred thousand dollars for STEM funding that is used for equipment. It'll be used to cover some of the equipment expenses for the Centers of Excellence projects. If that happens, now the governor's budget is not the legislative budget. One piece of good news for what we've talked about is that the projections now for Prop two oh seven tax revenues coming to the college in this fiscal year will be about two point two million dollars. Recall that we've had conversations with the board, and and that number will be significantly bigger than that in the future. But there's a phase-in component where they have to put the put the parameters together, get the businesses up and running, have the tax revenues come in, and then there's a base amount of funding for administrative costs and for some other support services and programs that get funded first, then it gets starts getting distributed to the education institutions. So nevertheless, the good news is that we're we're going to be able to expect about two point two million dollars in the coming year. That money is to be used for workforce training, but it's a pretty generic term, and we have lots of programs that qualify under workforce under that definition. So that two point two million dollars, for all intents and purposes, is going to help support the college's general operations. Okay, now how things are different. We've talked about the federal funding coming from Carissa. This is the the bill that was passed in late December. It's a significant increase over the current year's CARES Fund, the last CARES Fund Act, in that it continues to fund us at about five million dollars that will go directly to students. But in the institutional funds increase from the CARES Act is about five million dollars to somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen to eighteen million dollars will be coming into the college to help us support the college needs. Now, the Carissa is intended to fund to defray lost revenue, to cover expenses associated with COVID. Those include things like technical technological costs for computing equipment or getting licenses and things like that, so that you can provide distance education for folks, and also includes other student support costs. There are a lot of costs at the college that qualify under Carissa, and the goal for us is to make sure that we qualify and can account for that entire seventeen to eighteen million dollars. From the budgeting standpoint, because the money's going to be coming in and will cross over into the budget year, it essentially enables us to cover those deficits that I was talking about, those lost revenues that we talked about, to continue doing the things that we have done with the CARES Act funds, that is, to cover technical like information technology costs for students, making sure that students have technology available, proctoring costs, additional financial aid assistance in terms of consulting and counseling software for students and having money available for to help the students. So all of those things, the things that we the college feels like are working really well with CARES, we are going to continue on, and we'll talk more specifically about that in coming months. And then it provides additional funds for us to do some other key things. And there's a working group at the college, I mentioned this, I think, a week or so ago, that we have a group together talking about priority needs at the college. And we've mentioned that to the board, a number of them are these continuing and ongoing CARES-funded projects and and initiatives. On top of that, it is really focusing on getting students back onsite in the fall. So a lot of the things that we're going to be talking about, a lot of the big costs are putting up more secure safety and security protocols for students for reentry. Right now, we have a procedure for a small number of students to check temperatures and to go through the usual questions, that sort of thing. If we scale up to fifty percent or more capacity, we have to have different ways and systems for handling that. And so that's one of the costs we're going to be talking about. We're going to be talking about putting technology in for high-flex classrooms throughout the district. That is, so that they can have onsite and remote learning at the same time from the same classroom. We're going to be talking about sanitation 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 systems, so that you have ongoing cleaning of the air in the classroom space and costs associated with that. And along with some of the things that we've talked about, the mobile technology and things like that. So we'll be talking more at length with the board about how the Carissa funds will be used, how we will qualify, the qualified expenses will be attached to that. And essentially, what that does is it covers these losses that we have and gives us some flexibility going forward in the budget. Okay, from a from this key standpoint of the revenue picture, and this is how things make it very different in terms of the timing of the budget this year, is when we went it went forward with Prop forty one, we talked to the community about two things. One is that if forty one passes, that we'd be looking at not recommending not increasing tuition and also not increasing the property tax levy in the upcoming year. So at this point, that's one of those are two of the key things that we're looking to get feedback from the board, but that we are recommending. And that changes the timing, because at this point in the budget, a lot of the pressure is about making a decision about tuition, because in March, we want to make a decision on tuition so that we can get it into the schedule of classes, so that when students start registering for the fall, that they're charged the same amount right when registration opens. So what we're looking to do is take a take a recommendation to the board in March, where we will continue tuition at the same rate that the current year's rates. And it will be a board action item, because we want to set tuition for the next year, but it's not to include any change. So with that, I'm going to pause right there and ask if the board has any questions or any feedback related to that at this point.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Garcia? You're you're muted.
Okay, there's not going to be any fee increases, correct?
Right, what we're looking at, these these the the standard fees that we're talking about, like so tuition and the base fees, like the student services fee, there's a student services fee, there's an information technology fee, and then the standard credit tuition rate. What we're looking to do is not change those at all. There are some course fees that will change. Those are direct cost-related, so that if in you're you're taking a culinary class and the costs of food have gone up in that particular class, some of those have changed. They're very minor in terms of what those changes have been, and those have already been set, actually. And they they were given as information to the board at the last meeting. But in terms of the standard fees, what we're looking to do is not increase them.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
So I One of the other things that we're
Damian, just Yes. Just as an aside, Prop two oh seven is exempted from expenditure limit.
Okay, that's great to know. And I and I would just say, you know, I would just commend the I just commend Dr. B. and Chancellor Lambert for bringing forward an anticipation of a plan that doesn't increase any any fees or tuition increases, because I think all of those things, especially now, are whether they are perceived or real barriers, could really continue to impact getting people re-enrolled into the programs and the classes that they were taking or just getting enrolled into the institution. So I, you know, I'm supportive of that. I think this is, you know, especially with the Carissa funds, I think it helps offset the economic realities that the institution is facing. But it just, you know, I think, you know, Dr. B., what would be helpful for me is to, and maybe, you know, you can sort of touch on this a little, but, you know, if if we see this being a K recovery for the institution, where we have a a deep decline and then a fast recovery, or are we going to see more of a, you know, long-range recovery? And then what are the real financial implications that we may be facing, you know, next year or the year after, or three or four years down the road? I think sort of starting to have some discussions about those would be helpful, too.
Yeah, and and it's an excellent point. And one of the things that with when we're looking at Carissa and what kinds of priorities we have with that, what we're looking to do is is use those to bridge the gap, right? So and which is, you know, when I mentioned what the point of Carissa is, is to to cover and defray lost revenues, the idea is to to use it to bridge the gap to where we're at right now and ensure that we have a sustainable future. And that's one of the reasons why I showed that Prop forty one, the expenditure limitation slide, is that our revenues are going to continue to go up from property taxes. They're going to go up pretty slowly unless there's a tax increase in the future. But what we but what it does do is that if we have that K-shaped recovery, as as Chairperson Klinko mentioned, and we have our tuitions get back to a stable point, then we're going to be in a much healthier place. It's going to set us up to be healthy going forward as well.
And Dr. B., could you just I mean, I mean, you know, for Board Board Member Ripley's benefit, could you just talk a little bit about the about the levy and about, you know, if we don't if we don't extend the levy this year, you know, the accumulation of that percentage over time? And sort of maybe sort of recap that what we did last year?
Yeah, great point. So the way that
Board Member Ripley has a has a question.
Yes.
And I apologize, I can only see five people, so I, thanks.
No, sorry, I mean, while you're answering that, I mean, to to could you also just just briefly, if it's an extended conversation, we can wait. But also briefly touch on that, the 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 property levy, tax levy, and how what all this means for next year, because we do need to think in terms of, you know, not just this year, but the next three to five years. So without the Carissa funds, without the seventeen million dollars of stimulation, we how are we going to sustain ourselves in terms of our budget, especially since enrollment seems to be or tuition seems to be the major challenge here? So how would how are we going to so you say we're setting ourselves up? How do how are we setting ourselves up for next year? Because we may or may probably won't get, can we? We can't count on another seventeen million next year. It'd be great, but
Right, absolutely. Absolutely. So I I'll say this in fairly simple terms, and then I'll switch over to the tax levy question. So from the from the standpoint of our our increased revenues this year, so there are essentially two. One is the property tax growth, that one point three million. The other one is Prop two oh seven money, so that's two point, so it's two point two million. So what we'd be looking at in normal year is, okay, those are our revenues that are going up. Everything else, say, say enrollment is now stable, whatever, whether it's higher or lower, it's stable, right? So year over year, it's staying essentially the same. So those two revenue sources would be plus three point three million, and then we have a handful of expenses that are increasing on a given year. And that's where I was sort of starting the point where you take, if you take out the lost tuition revenue, and you have, you're talking more in terms of stable revenues, it would be more like we're going up three point three million, and then the expenses associated, and this is before compensation, before salary increases, would be more like an increase of about four million. So it's not like ten million dollars bad. It's in in those stable terms would be more like, okay, you're talking about a million or something like that. Not not good, but not as devastating. Going forward, though, there's a little bit different situation, because Prop two oh seven money should be increasing pretty dramatically. So next year, we should be looking at, I would say, quite a bit more than double that. I think the the initial estimates were we would be getting about ten million dollars a year. So that's that's coming fiscal year twenty three. We should be looking at a pretty big influx of revenue from that source. And then the other one that we can sort of look forward to gets to the property tax levy question. So the way that the property tax levy works, and I'm not going to tell you exact numbers, these are close to real numbers, but they're I'm going to keep it simple. So the way that the the board has the ability to increase the tax levy by two percent a year. And so if you start at a hundred thousand dollars, then the first year that the board increased by two percent, it would be generating another two million dollars. And then essentially, you could get about two, it would grow, but it'd be about two million dollars each year thereafter. That's that's from that two percent. That's and then growth is added to that. So any new property that adds on, you get that revenue no matter no matter what. So if there's big growth in Pima County, there's more revenue coming into the college. If the board does not increase the take the tax levy increase of two percent, we can continue to levy at what that maximum level was. So after that first year, it was a hundred and two, and then it was a hundred and four, and then it's about a hundred and six. I mean, again, it's a little bit higher than that because of compounding interest. So if that first year, you say, okay, we're not going to increase the tax levy, we're going to stay at zero. That base level is now a hundred, but the next year, you can do a hundred and four, right? Because you could have gone to a hundred and two, and now you've got another two percent on top of that. So you have this sort of remaining ability So you have this sort of remaining ability to increase back up to what your levy max is. We did not increase the tax levy last year. And if we don't increase it again, now we'll have a levy max capacity that's about four plus, it's going to be a little over 4% on top of what you could do the next year, which is 2%. So you could actually do a very big tax levy increase and generate another 6%, something like that. You'd have the ability to get all of that revenue back. You can't go back in time, but you can get back up to the max. Now, there's a political cost to that, which is that if you do a big tax levy, tax percent increase, it's pretty apparent, right? A 2% is not very significant when you're talking about $100,000 property, a pretty typical property in town. That increase year over year for, for the college is a couple of dollars a year. It's not that noticeable. If you start increasing and you get back up to the max when you haven't been for a while, then it's noticeable, right? Then there's a big increase to the tax bill that taxpayers will see. That happened with Central Arizona a number of years ago where they increased their taxes by 20%. And lots of unhappy taxpayers are still angry, I think, about it, and this is years later. So you've got to be, we've got to be judicious about that. You wouldn't want to jump all the way back with a big increase unless there was a real big need for it. But we still have the capacity to do that. So we're not sort of really shooting ourselves in the feet. And now from an expenditure limitation standpoint, we have the capacity to spend it, which is we, we wouldn't have had in the past. Hopefully that, I know I said a lot. Hopefully that explains it.
Dr. B, I have two questions on the tax levy. One, well, so one, I think it's worth note, one's one sort of a comment and then, and then the question. One is that the, the tax levy really keeps pace. That's really the amount that we're able to bring in through the tax levy is just we're constantly sort of keeping, that's sort of by design, right? I mean, that's part of the reason that we have the ability to do it. But could you, could you talk to us about your understanding of what other taxing districts throughout the state and in Pima County are doing around their levies?
I can speak more to the community colleges, both in terms of, I can, I can give an early assessment of tuition and an early assessment of property taxes, and the typical is to not increase either this year. That's not, it's not going to be exclusively true. There are, a few districts will be increasing tuition a little bit. Northland Pioneer has a multi-year tuition plan, so they're, they've already, you know, a couple of years ago, they set this three or four year path. So they, this was sort of predictable. And then a couple of them will, I think, will increase their property taxes. But most are trying not to increase tuition, being cognizant of how challenging things are for students. And obviously, they, they all have the same enrollment challenges we have. Most of them have dropped 15 to 20% as well. So they, they have the same, they're in the same situation as us.
So it looks like Ms. Garcia has another question, but before I get to that, so I just want to have one follow-up question, which is, could you, could you reach out to some of the other taxing districts in Pima County and just sort of inquire what they are doing around this? Whether the school district is doing anything or the county itself? Okay, Ms. Garcia.
Be happy to.
So I have a question on the 41 proposition that we passed. It was our understanding or my understanding that there was money already there, and I don't know what the amount of money was, that we could spend if we needed to. Because now we didn't have a limit. Or we didn't have.
Right.
So what is that amount? And how can we?
Right, it frees up, yeah, the, the, the projections at the time where it was going to free up somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 million dollars. And what that really means, let me translate what that means. So if you, you recall in the last meeting, I talked about our annual financial surplus, like how much we had in surplus revenues over expenses last year. And it was in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 million, and it's going to be going down a little bit. Well, it would have gone down normally a little bit this year. What that essentially means was that we had more capacity to spend it on operating purposes and our surplus year over year would have been, we would have been shrinking that surplus. That's what we were talking about with flexibility. We, we don't need to generate this much surplus. But right now, right now, meaning before 481, right now, we're in a situation where because we're capped on our expenses, we're going to run these big surpluses. What we're looking to do is have Prop 41 pass, have more flexibility to spend it on operations, shrink what our surpluses are going to be, and that was to the tune of about that $10 million. Now, the thing that happened on top of it is the lost revenue and enrollment. So it's a little bit worse than that. It's a little bit lower than that $10 million. But it does give us some flexibility. We'd be talking about things a little bit differently. The first and foremost thing that 481 did though, is when you look at that slide with that gray bar chart, and I would, and, and then you look at where it's going to be in fiscal year 22, it would have gone down to 86 million. And our expenses are going to go up pretty dramatically, like probably $5 million over the prior year. So we would have had a huge problem if, if not for 41.
And Chancellor Lambert, to follow up on that, could you just remind us, when we went out to the voters, it wasn't just, but it wasn't just a blanket expenditure limit, we sort of framed how we would utilize some of these funds. And could you just talk a little bit about the argument and sort of what we told?
Right. In fact, Dave anticipated your question there, Damian. So this was, this is some of the things that we were proposing to the voters that we would do with that flexibility. And obviously, you know, we have to kind of weigh and balance all of these pieces over time. And, and then, and then there were some other things that we also mentioned as part of the equation that's not really reflected in here. So, so, you know, instead of reading through that, you, you can kind of see what some of those pieces are about.
And this list was there because when we're talking about developing the budget, and, and again, we've talked a little bit about the Carissa funds and what the intended potential use of that. This is the other component that we want to factor in when we're building the budget. What are the priorities we want to make sure we cover? And that's where we go back to 41 and say, okay, these are the things that we said to our taxpayers who supported 41. Let's, you know, and we want to show that we're making progress on these. So this is not going to be a one-year effort. We're not going to all of a sudden in one year be able to do everything that we talked about. However, we will make tangible progress in particularly the expanding the workforce training, the integrating digital technology in the classrooms and the educational offering in high demand fields. Those three in particular, we will make some substantive progress in this upcoming budget year. And it's not to say that the other things aren't going to happen also, but, but those are the ones where it's like really clear we'll have an impact. Any other questions on that? So I've, I've gone through the Carissa funding ideas. Again, we'll continue to come back to the board. We'll continue to have conversations with the board throughout the spring. Because I, again, we're not going to be pushing or, or recommending a tuition increase. The key elements of the budget then become some of the contractual obligations that we have. So the healthcare benefit that we provide, the retirement obligation, particularly related to public safety retirement system. Some of those cost increases, the additional contract and licenses that we have on a normal annual basis. Those are the things that we're going to also, we're going to be prioritizing as well as then, this is getting into what we always talk about, the additional priorities. So the first ones are the ongoing obligations that I just mentioned. Reinvestment in plant, addressing deferred maintenance, doing the things that we need to do, as well as in some cases, doing some of the big projects for Centers of Excellence and then the energy management, which we'll be taking to the board in about a month with a great deal more additional information and some specifics on what we're trying to do. So investing in the plant to end up reducing our utilities and energy consumption going forward. But also folding in with that project, folding in the educational program and having living labs so that they're actually going to be looking at and using information coming out of our systems and being trained on some of the same types of equipment so that when they get, enter the workplace, they have state-of-the-art training, truly state-of-the-art training. They will be very much in demand as HVAC and train in people, train employees as well as in data analytics is another program we're looking to expand out of the information tied to the energy management program. And then, as always, we look to prioritize faculty and staff compensation. That would be also not only looking at providing some kind of a reasonable cost of living increase, but as you know, we have a class comp, excuse me, a class comp study underway right now. And what we're looking to do in the budget, it, it will not be completed by the time the budget starts. But what we're looking to do is to create a pool of funds from which we can address any class comp issues that are identified. We can start making progress on that. It might take a couple of years for us to make progress, to, to completely hit what we're trying to hit when we come out with the class comp goals. But I would, I think it's reasonable to expect that we will probably have $2 to $3 million of additional class comp recommendations coming out of that, that, that study to sort of change the structure, to move people to where they are in more of a market competitive standpoint, to, to, to create a structure where it's more adaptive and has some merit-based components to it, those kinds of things. We'll have additional costs tied to it. And what we want to do is start setting aside funds to be able to address those as needed.
So, Mr. Chair, let me just kind of build off of Dave's comments, especially on the class comp. Employees have expressed concerns about potential job loss, getting their salaries cut. So I want to, I, I, speaking to the Faculty Senate last week, I wanted to allay their fears. Class comp study is not being used as a tool to eliminate positions at the college. Also, the class comp study is not being used as a tool to reduce people's current compensation. It's not uncommon in a class comp study to do, some states refer to it as Y-rated, meaning that we're going to hold you harmless. You may not see an increase because you're in a job category that's not going up, or you may be in a job category where the, you're actually above it in terms of what your current pay is. We won't adjust you down to that level. So I just wanted to assure folks, and I think it's important that you're all of aware of that, that we're not going to lay people off because of it and we're not going to cut people's salaries. Also going back to the other point about Prop 481, we're going to take all of those items and we're going to create a dashboard. So once that flexibility becomes available to us, we want to show the community, this is how we are using that flexibility against some of those core messages. So you'll see a scorecard. And I think what you'll see Dave do, especially for the Finance Audit Committee, is every now and then update the Finance and Audit Committee on how we're progressing with that. And then obviously, we'll share that with the full board and with the community as well.
Thank you for that clarification. And Ms. Ripley has her question, it looks like.
Yes, thank you for this presentation, Dr. B. I have a question, since tuition and enrollment are our biggest, if not only, you know, real challenge in terms of revenue, where on your plan, your budget plan, would be any kind of extra expenses spent towards enrollment in terms of recruitment and retainment? And I, I mean, I would like to see a dedicated project that looks into the challenges of enrollment and, and our challenge to keep tuition the same, if not lower, in the future.
I think that's really good feedback from the board. So one, one thing is, we had talked about in their previous slide where it, it shows the Carissa funds and some of the ideas we're looking at, is marketing is listed there. On further review, as we got into it, it, it can't, the Carissa funds can't directly be used to support marketing and pre-registration type activities. However, that doesn't mean that when we have enough expenses that qualify for the Carissa funds, that it doesn't free up other money to put into marketing. So if, you know, I think that the, the board has indicated a priority. I think it's critical at this point to put more money into marketing and to find a way to get the students who we otherwise would have seen at the college at this point. Getting them back to the college is going to take some effort to get them back. And I think we're going to need to put some additional money in it.
Great, thank you. And not, not solely marketing, simply a, a marketing campaign, but, you know, dedicated resources towards supporting support staff, whose job it is to recruit, recruitment and retention. Thanks.
Go ahead, Chancellor Lambert.
So just to go along with what Board Member Ripley was touching on, it's, it's our approach to enrollment is holistic. So it's not just the marketing and outreach pieces, it's having those strong services components, as well as having, making sure our programs are relevant and vibrant. So when you look, we have essentially remade our business program and our IT pieces. The enrollments in those programs are actually going up as we speak compared to other parts of the college. So we know that if by investing in modernizing programming, it does help with the attraction and the marketing of that relevant types of programming. So you'll see more of that as we go forward. Again, it's a holistic approach.
So, Ms. Garcia.
And my question is, you know, when we come up, when all these great plans that are coming up, where's the data that shows that there's going to be that interest when you look at the population?
Ms. Garcia, could you just clarify the interest? Are you saying the interest in the individual program?
No, with individuals that are coming to, coming to the program. If you're not even, you know, if you're not preparing them at a younger age in high school or even in, you know, in the elementary, I, I guess I just don't see how that's going to happen, how, how we're going to bring these people in. And they're going to know that all these opportunities are available.
Chancellor Lambert.
Because our recruit, our recruitment really hasn't been there. You do a lot of advertisement, you know, I mean, I think some of it is great, but are we branding? But what, what, I mean, who's really looking at it? You continue, you know, we continue to see the enrollment declining.
So Board Member Garcia, you know, yes, we've seen enrollment declining, but pre-pandemic, we had gotten to a point where we had stabilized the drop-off in enrollment. So that's important to not lose sight of that. And also understand where that enrollment was going. A lot of that enrollment was going into Pima Online and to some of these newer areas that we had invested in. And remember, it's not just the high school students and the K-12 students. Our larger share of enrollment is really the working adult or the, or what we call the working learners and the learning workers. So that's another big segment of what we, what we've done. And then, and so how do we know? So when we work with employers, that, that is one way we know what the skills that they need in terms of what will be attractive for those working learners. So that's one way we, we know that. We look at other trend data and, and then use that trend data to really help us identify opportunities for growth and strengthening programs. And that's why you're seeing like our business and IT areas are really taking off. Cybersecurity is an example of that. But if you want to look at aviation, which had been here, we work with the J-TEDs and the high schools, and there's clear interest in aviation. That's why we were able to sell the governor and the legislature in making that $15 million investment to expand that. We wouldn't have been able to make that happen without showing that there was demand for that program, both on the employer side and on the student interest side. And so, so, so we look at a number of different approaches to kind of make that, make that case for, for our programming and, and marketing of those programs.
And you also have to remember the cost. The aviation program happens to be one of the highest. And a lot of people who really wanted to get into it can't afford it.
That's why, you know, unfortunately, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act. So we, there, there are other AMP programs that are far more expensive than the one we offer at Pima. So, so what we've tried to do is to make sure we can cover the cost. So that, that's a differential tuition program, but also that there's the financial assistance to help those students who need it the most to be able to participate in that program. So that's why financial aid and, and really pushing and advocating in Washington DC around the Pell and, and, and the like to help support especially low-income disadvantaged students.
Chancellor Lambert, could you also just sort of talk briefly about the types of programs that we are investing in and what type of wages people can anticipate when they finish our programs?
So, so an example of that, and this is where the short-term pieces are starting to come into play. Short-term non-degree programs are growing. An example of that is the Google IT Support Certification. Soon as we brought that online, it filled up immediately. So we only had capacity initially, I believe, and Ian is online, so he can correct me if I'm wrong. We had, I think we were allocated like 50 slots initially. And we're going to be growing to 150 plus, I believe, and that the enrollment is there. Folks coming out of that with that less than a half a year program, they can make somewhere in the neighborhood close to $40,000 a year just with, with that certification. That's short-term, it's non-degreed, but it's paying off. We're getting ready to bring AWS Cloud online and you're going to see a similar effect happen there as well. So again, it's, it's not one versus the other, it's a full spectrum approach. Non-degree programs to degree programs to lifelong learning programs like the Academy with Caterpillar, the Advanced Technology Academy. So you're going to see us doing more of this full array, which will help us attract additional students and then they will all pay at different differential rates depending on the nature of the program, et cetera.
And any additional questions? Okay, so we have a few minutes left. I mean, I would just want to echo what, what Board Member Ripley said, you know, I, in the past, you know, two years ago, we had though that sequence of initiatives around really targeting and around enrollment. These were, you know, high impact, that we weren't taking on long-term operational costs, they sort of, I think we referred to them, Dr. B, I think you referred to them as sort of an on-off faucet. You know, I would again, challenge the institution, particularly with the enrollment declines that we've seen, because we know those people are out there. You know, this is not the birth dirt, this is not, this is not, you know, a slow falling off. These are people who didn't continue with us because of the climate conditions that were impacting their lives, whether they were uncomfortable with continuing in the on, for online environment, whether they had to go to, you know, their job, you know, at a, you know, nine to five, all of a sudden was, you know, overtime and working around the clock and they're being paid more, whatever the, whatever the sequence of events that occurred for people. Where they had to, you know, provide childcare to their kids who are taking classes on Zoom apps, whatever the reasons. An entire, you know, jet sort of cohort of individuals have, have, you know, chose not to continue with us, but I think we have a huge opportunity to get them back. And I, and I think we have a moral responsibility and obligation to figure out how to reach them. Because that's a huge group of people who will be negatively impacted. We know they will be negatively financially impacted for years and decades to come because of the interruption by COVID. And, and on top of that, we have all of the students who are, you know, from all of the school districts. We have students who are, you know, increasing failure rates, you know, people who are continuing to struggle. We're going to have to put more into some of those developmental ed classes to figure out how to move those kids into college-ready in this hybrid environment. Maybe we'll be back, maybe we won't, you know, we think there's still so much uncertainty in the space. So I would just challenge us to be bold. Really, this is again, a time to be bold and to do exactly what Ms. Ripley is saying, which is aggressively pursue enrollment, marketing and strategies to get people back and keep them in. And I know that can come in many different ways, and I know some of the things we've done are working. But I just cannot underscore enough how important that is to me, that we put that front and center in this discussion and that we, you know, be bold in, in both the resources that we use. Because I just, I just, it breaks my heart to think about that cohort.
Chairperson Klinko, may I add something?
Yes, is that?
This is the lotus.
Yeah, I can't see anybody, so thank you for breaking that.
Yes, you're welcome. So I wanted to address Board Member Ripley and also Board Member Garcia's concerns. I think we need to have more of a presence in the high schools. And it's so difficult right now with the pandemic and the situation right now. But our thought is reaching out to the faculty at the high schools and middle schools because the one, the advisors are wonderful and the counselors and can tell the students, but who's with the students every day? And that's the faculty. So they need to, we need to share all the good things that we're doing at Pima, like the Google certification, all the different relevant programs, so they can share that with the students. Because I don't think that's getting across completely. And so that's one way I think we can help with this effort.
Okay.
So can I?
Oh yeah, Ms. Garcia, go ahead.
Okay, so, so I got, I have a notice here from somebody and basically, because I have been asking prior faculty members at the inception of the college. And so they sent me a real quick note here, it says, from my question, "In addition to encouraging Pima County residents to pursue their interest in PCC, the college in its early years was very personal in its approach to registering students for classes. Each and every semester, all of the full faculties were contractually responsible for meeting and helping those seeking to register for classes, to get registered for classes." Because, you know, I have been out in the community trying to find out, why is it that enrollment has dropped? What did they do in the past when we had the high enrollment? So I just wanted to share that. So we do, I believe it's more of a presence. We have to be more present.
Do you want to respond? And maybe you could also just talk about what we're seeing trends nationally as well.
So, I'm glad to, Mr. Chair, so we're, we're actually putting together a hub and spoke plan. And that hub and spoke plan is to really increase our engagement at multiple levels within the community. So it's not just going to be, it's going to be in the high schools, we're hoping to reach into the middle schools. And then we want to create a greater presence, community-wide as well. And that's what the hub and spoke piece. That's why we moved to this campus VP model, so that the campus VPs will be more engaged into the community as part of that piece. So that's one element of our strategy. And then working more with employers to reach those working adults to get them to see the value of coming in and getting enhanced skills training. Because we're, one of our key messages to the employer community is, especially the small, medium, is that we are your training arm. Look at us that way. Because a lot of them aren't rathons where they can invest in their own professional development of their employees. So you're going to see this multi-pronged strategy to help with enrollment. But with all that said, we got to keep in mind the larger context. All of us in Arizona are struggling around enrollments in terms of community colleges. And then aligning that with what's going on in the national. Local data feeds into the state data, which feeds into the national data. That's why it's important to understand all those levels of data points to start asking certain questions. But we also know by re-framing our programs, creating new programs, that it is generating interest in the community, whether it's the folks in K-12 or whether it's those working learners and learning workers. I got you to five o'clock.
You did, right there. And then Dr. B, do you have any final comments? Or have you heard sort of our biggest concerns? I see your next steps up here.
Yeah, no, I think that's really good feedback. Any feedback, we'll, we'll have ongoing conversations throughout the spring. And this is just a basic, but you know, calendar of how things will work out. Again, we'll take the recommendation to continue to keep the tuition rates at the, at the current year rates in the March meeting. And we'll do some updating of revenue projections and then keep you posted on, on the Charisa Act recommendations. The big budget presentation will be in May and formal adoption is in June. So it's going to be sort of each month, we'll have conversations with the board, keep you updated on how things are coming together. And look forward to our continued discussions.
Okay, we really appreciate it. Our next item is 2.2 Draft Mission Fulfillment Framework. We have a presentation by Dr. Nick Richmond, the Vice Chancellor for Strategy Analytics and Research and Strategic Planning Team members. And I'm going to hand it over to Chancellor Lambert to give a introduction.
So we are very pleased to have Dr. Nick Richmond here and the entire team who's been working on our updating and renewing our mission fulfillment framework, which is so essential to our overall planning efforts and the development of our strategic plan. So she's going to lead us through that conversation. We want to get the board's feedback on the work that's already been done. You're seeing a whole new simplification of what we've done in prior years. And remember, just for, for those board members who weren't here with us, when we first had to construct our, our plans, it was really under the pressure of, the HLC, the college didn't really have a clearly defined mission fulfillment framework or strategic plan. So we had to quickly put one together. And, you know, all things considered, it wasn't that bad. But now we have an opportunity to really take it to another level. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Richmond.
And Dr. Richmond, if I could just interject one second, I do want to just acknowledge that we have received a lot of feedback from community members. You know, we've received emails from Phil Lopez and former member Bark Hannah, as well as others. And the board really, I just want to say, we really appreciate the input and the guidance on this really important, important action. So, Dr. Richmond.
Thank you, Chair Klinko, members of the board, Chancellor Lambert, colleagues and guests. It is my pleasure to be here with you this evening, late afternoon, I'm not sure what to call 5:00 PM, to share an update on the draft statements that we're developing for the mission fulfillment framework. As Chancellor Lambert mentioned, your input is critical to this. The input of community members is also critical, and this is one step in a review process as we develop statements that we will ultimately bring to the board later this semester for your final review and approval. I am going to share my screen, give me just one moment to get set up. Okay, do you see my slides now? Okay, good, good. So our current framework has been in place for approximately five years. As the chancellor mentioned, this was developed at the time when the college was on probation. And we made some changes, fairly significant changes to the way we approached mission fulfillment at that time, including the addition of objectives and a comprehensive set of key performance indicators. But what we're trying to do now, we're away from that probation sanction, we're moving forward full steam with various different initiatives. We want to take time now for a comprehensive review to ensure the framework, it really represents Pima today. So I consider our existing framework really a stepping stone to the ideal state that we were trying to get to with this next step. Now, our current framework is comprised of a number of different elements. So we have vision, mission, core themes, objectives and values. And then, as I mentioned, we have this set of key performance indicators. The current framework is posted online. And I'll just open this up to give you a feel for what's in here. It's not our purpose today to review the current framework, but this is available to any of you, if you would like to open this up. But we have the mission, the vision, as you see here, we have our list of values. And then in particular, I want to pause here. This is our list of core themes and objectives. And you can see this is a very lengthy list of items.
Is there any way you can make that a little larger? It is just a little, as we're talking about, it is a little difficult to read on the screen.
I might be able to, let's try, how's that?
Much better, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, the key detail to notice here is the amount of content that we have. And based on the time the framework has been in place, we've received feedback at different points over the last five years. And more recently, as we've put them statements out for input. And among the feedback, things like it's too long, it's really hard to remember. There's a huge amount of KPIs at which we have aligned with each of the objectives. And it's arguably more complex than needed. I think this is in part because we developed it while we were on probation. There were lots of priorities at the institution, there was lots of change going on. But what we want to try and do, and one of the guiding principles that we've adopted as we go through this, is how do we make the mission fulfillment framework memorable, easy to relate to? Because this isn't something that you should have to go to a website to look up, to check all the details. This should be something that employees, our community members can connect with and understand quickly and not have to go study. So to help us approach this, we've been carrying out a comprehensive review that has been running for some time. Got a little bit delayed during the pandemic. This was intended to be complete now, but the pandemic happened, so we've been taking a little bit more time. This has been primarily driven by work by the strategic planning team from 2019 to now. And as Chancellor Lambert noted, we have many members of the planning team on the call with us today. We also held an administrator retreat in the summer of 2019 to gather some initial kind of feedback and orientation for the move forward with the review. And we had a series of open forums across Pima sites in February of last year. Also, we had the Futures Conference 2020, which focused on this topic. And it will be the topic of the first of a sequence of four shorter futures conferences this year, and I'll mention those towards the end. Now, this is a list of the planning team members. Within this committee, we have a stakeholder model, so we have representatives across the different key areas of the institution. We have administrators, we have staff, we have faculty. We also have two student members of this group. We're leveraging the Futures Conference as a primary mechanism for community input into this process. Though I am also always available to speak with interested community members, as I know my co-chair is as well. And speaking of my co-chair, I'm going to hand you over to the person who's been leading the strategic planning team alongside me for the review period and as we develop the strategic plan. And I'm going to hand you over to Dr. Anthony Sovak to speak about the next few slides.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Hello, everyone. So when I first started this, about a year, a year and a half ago, Nick, I wasn't quite as, we came up with the different structures of mission fulfillment framework, or I probably wasn't the most knowledgeable. But over this time, I, I've sort of come a little closer to it. And I, I wanted to lead this slide because I was particularly proud of how we were able to boil each one of these things down into one question, whether it's, the purpose statement is why, right? Which is to say, why do we as Pima Community College do what we do? Why do we exist? What's, you know, why, why are we here? Why are we showing up to work? And in, or vision, whether it's where, or mission, or what, or behaviors, or how. And we'll go through all of these in a little more detail and share with the board what we're working with now to get your feedback, to see, you know, where we're at. But as Nick was saying, these things needed to be functional. If we, we don't just want it to be something that, that fills in a box, that gets put on a spreadsheet, that gets put on a website, but something that can be meaningful for the employees and the students and the community day in and day out. Why does Pima exist? We wanted a statement that's not only easy to remember, but you know, is inspiring in some way. And so hopefully you'll let us know where we got it right and where we didn't get it, where, where we need to improve. So why does PCC exist? I think I maybe did this one already, so let's skip forward to our draft. What we have so far is transforming lives through education. And so as you might suspect, this has gone through a number of different iterations. And I think I wanted to pause here to see if there are any board member comments or community comment, community member comments about this purpose.
Comments from board members? Okay.
No, I like it, it's punchy. It's good.
Excellent. I, I do, so I know most of us have, have been teachers at some point in time, and there was this old trick in a classroom where if you waited four seconds, people would be very uncomfortable and then they would talk. But I found in Zoom, you have to wait a lot longer and it gets, it's a big people push forward. So thank you very much. And if others have other comments on, on this, or if there's hours, as we're going through, we can step backwards and revisit.
You know, this might be a place to also just, you know, if we added, again, I don't want to wordsmith and spend the time doing that. But I think, you know, there are some themes that we've heard from the community and that, you know, I think, I certainly, some of the values and, and issues and some of, I think, the main ones that I continue to hear and resonate particularly with me is affordability, accessibility, you know, open access. I mean, all of these sort of, you know, being sort of premier, offering the highest quality, all of those things are sort of some of these key components. But this may be a place to sort of put before education, to just reaffirm the affordability of the, of what type of education, because there's a lot of different ways you can transform lives through education. Some are more expensive than others, and it really is our mission to keep it as affordable and as accessible as possible.
Yeah, it's good feedback.
Well, would that, that'll, I'm assuming that's going to be discussed though in the actual mission statement, right? We're just going through the process at this point, is that correct?
Well, our mission is our what, and we will get that in a couple of slides. But what I will say is, we've heard that feedback from community members too. And regrettably, in our wordsmithing, it's not in the mission at the moment. But when we get to that slide, I think it's a great, great suggestion. And it was Phil Lopez who, who communicated with Nick and I about that. And we certainly think that there's some, there's some, that's, that, that, we have, I think one of the things that might help Nick and the committee and I is, is it a why? is it a why, is it a where, is it a what, is it a how, right? Because that would kind of indicate where in the framework it would go. I think one of the things that I found challenging is sometimes we want to put everything in all of these statements. And that's when I think it becomes like this wordsmith behemoth, right? Which isn't to say that affordable shouldn't go here or shouldn't go there. I think we all agree it should go somewhere, but where, where exactly it might want to end up? Is that about right, Nick?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Other other comments from the board on the purpose before we move on?
I, I, I think, I don't want to word, I am going to wordsmith. So if you are going to, because I agree full, wholeheartedly with Damian and with Mr. Lopes and, and a lot of the founding fathers and mothers who had some input, good input in the, in the affordability piece is truly the essence, I think, of all of it. And it might go transforming lives through affordable education or something, affordable or accessible, something like that.
Yeah, as a, as a former English faculty here at Pima Community College, I love wordsmithing, so it's okay by me.
All right, great, thank you for the input on this. Let's move on and take a look at the next statement in the framework. So the vision, as Anthony introduced, is our where. So where as an institution are we trying to go? And this is really what's our aspirational future state. Now typically, a vision statement is something that we will never actually attain, but it's the goal to which we are always striving. And as we've had this conversation with the strategic planning team, one of the ways I have encouraged the team to think about it is we have this lofty goal, right? Achieve 60 Pima County. The vision paints a picture of Pima beyond that point in time. So if we think about Pima 10 years from now, we have succeeded in our goals for achieve 60. So we have increased the completion rate, or the number of completers to the point that 60% of our community hold a college credential of some kind. We have closed the equity gaps, so that is 60% across the diverse populations that we serve. Where might that college go next? And what, how, how might we think through that future state to kind of draft a compelling vision of the institution? I should note for this one, this is the least well-developed draft statement within this framework. We wanted to work initially on part of the planning process to sort of think through that future state a little bit, as we discussed with the board last month, I believe it was. So we currently have two statements. I don't think either one of them is the statement we will ultimately have, though I would be very interested to hear the input of the board from this. And the two statements we currently have are shown here. The first one is essentially the current vision statement for the institution. There's some minor wordsmithing in here, essentially it will be a premier community college, but that we will be the premier community college. Some of the discussions with the planning team was just like, well, you know what? We could just have the entire vision of the premier community college. Done, leave it at that. But we also have a second statement here that was developed by one of the groups in, within the strategic planning team, that Pima will be every Pima County resident's first choice for education and upskilling. Now, for both of these, there's a fair amount of discussion about buzzwords. We are trying to ensure that we don't have buzzwords within this framework. We want things that are meaningful, that use everyday language. Pathways is a possible buzzword. Upskilling is a possible buzzword. So we think that there are things we may need to look to in terms of the wording. But these are the current two statements that we have. And it would be great to hear from the board on your thoughts on these two statements, or your perspectives of how you would summarize that future state for the institution. And I'm very sorry, I have a seven-year-old knocking at my door, I have to turn my video off for a moment, but I know Anthony will be listening, I will be right back.
Board members? And then Ms. Garcia, go ahead, Ms. Ripley.
Oh, um, since you're asking, I think that I agree with the buzzwords. I mean, I don't know if, I think pathways is a, I don't know if it's a buzzword or it's just newer terminology, but I would wordsmith that to, if we had a choice, pipeline, because I think that's been a longer used term for, you know, a pathway, a pipeline. I think that even if we have it in the mission statement and in any, any other portions of this, I think this is someplace where affordable, affordable, because we want to keep that word, you know, affordable pathway or an affordable pipeline. And even in vision two, instead of using upskilling, just first choice for quality and affordable education, rather than, I think, because I think the upskilling piece is the how, not really, or the what, sorry, this is what we, you know, what we offer. I don't know where is where it belongs, but, but then again, I haven't been working on this as long as, as you all have. So that's my two cents on this slide.
Ms. Garcia?
I guess the only thing I would add from what Catherine Ripley said was diverse community. I would like that in there as well.
Dr. Hay?
Diverse community, is that on vision one though, isn't it already? The last two words?
Are we putting that together?
Right. I, I'm not sure about the word upskilling either, I'm, I'm not sure that fits. But that's just my two cents.
So I would say I really like this idea about being the premier community college. But I think, you know, we're, it's, you know, we say students, but we really are here to serve Pima County. It's not just students, we're serving businesses, we're serving the University of Arizona, we're providing, we're serving the school districts of our, of our, of our community. It's really the residents of Pima County that, that this institution serves. And I think maybe being a little clearer about that. But I would also love to see something about equity and inclusion here, and it's not just about serving the diverse community, but it's also assuring that we're providing that equity and inclusion with, within the broader framework, we're a leader in that area, and I think we have a responsibility. It's part of the driving goal of so many of our programs is to help achieve that equity.
Sorry, lots of great feedback.
Ms. Ripley?
I have one more. In, in vision one, and since we, we need to, you know, be economic with our words, because we want every word to count and punch, I would just maybe rethink, PCC will be the premier, the premier community college. I mean, we're the only community college in our county. So it almost sounds like, you know, we're the premier community college. When we're only the only, I don't know, I have a little problem with that, only because I think it might be a waste of a sentence. I like it, it's great. But the premier is premier would basically infer that we're the premier in Arizona in the country. I don't know.
I would hope that it's inferring that we are the premier community college in the United States. Like, I mean, that would be, that would be, how do we get to be the best? Because I feel so strongly that the residents of Pima County deserve the very best educational opportunity. And that's part of how we get there is by being the best. And so I see that sort of aspirational opportunity in that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was mixing it with vision two, like it would be the first choice. I mean, it's the only community college choice, so, but yeah, I see where, I see.
There's online choices, though, now, Cat. I think we've got to really be careful about, we have to focus on the online opportunities for students as well, who don't live in Pima County, quite frankly.
Yeah, well, I guess maybe it's the community college piece, then, the premier, you know, educational choice of education or something like that.
Yeah, I think if I might interject just for some clarity, that second vision statement where it says Pima County's residents' first choice, I think the committee very much wants to indicate the community that we serve in these documents, but kind of wordsmithing, how do we do that? Sometimes we say Southern Arizona, but we don't want to offend our other community college neighbors who also serve different parts of Southern Arizona. And then I think by choice, just to address Board Member Hayes' note, we were thinking, yeah, we've got a lot of competition coming in and competing for Pima County students. And they could choose the UVA, they could choose Southern New Hanford University, who enrolled about 140,000 students in the fall alone and is growing. They could choose ASU, they could choose Maricopa. And so it, I think, I think that's just kind of where we, that's how we arrived at these two kind of different ones.
Mr. Chair, just to add, keep in mind, we play a huge role in the economic development of the community. And you're seeing, one of the reasons why companies are willing to locate here or even expand here is because we, we have set our sights high. And, and so I hope that we don't lose sight of that. It's not just that we do education, we are an economic development driver for this community.
Right, this is great input, thank you all so much for your comments. We're busy making notes. The next version of this you see will incorporate the feedback that you're sharing with us. And to reiterate the comment Chancellor Lambert made.
And Dr. Richmond, you know, I just, could you, as just an aside, could you reach out to Board Member Gonzalez, who was unable to make today's meeting, just to touch base with him and see if he has any input, sort of as an aside, that would be, I think, useful too?
Absolutely, we'll be happy to, thank you. All right, so let's move past the vision, let's take a look at the next statement. Our mission, and for this, back to you, Anthony.
All right, this one's mine too. So the mission is, is our what? What is it we are today, what services do we provide and to whom do we provide those services? And so for these statements, again, I think we have two competing ones. And then for both, we have sort of some clarification that goes with it. This is partly a solve to some of the, we have a lot to say. We want to be, as Board Member Ripley was saying, punchy, but we also want it to include a lot. So for either, both of these, these would be kind of the stuff underneath that says for both would be like a subsection where we could add further details. And since we pulled our strategic planning team, some liked empower, some like education. It's empowering every student, every day, for every goal, or education for every student, every day, for every goal. And for both, we are an open admissions educational hub in Pima County, providing comprehensive and flexible learning opportunities for all. And then we go to sort of describe what we mean by every student, every day, every goal. Every student, we commit to meeting the diverse needs of every person who seeks to further themselves through education. Every day, we strive for excellence in teaching and support services to ensure that all of our students experience a welcoming and supportive environment that enhances their education. Every goal, we align our programs and services with meaningful careers, quality educational pathways and equity-driven practices to empower students to succeed in their college and career goals. Pause there for discussion or comment.
Nancy, if I may, before there are comments from the board, something I'd like to add. When I shared these draft statements with the cabinet on Wednesday, one of the things we talked about was choosing between language where we refer to students or we refer to learners. And that there's more of a shift in language nationally towards the use of learners, where we're thinking about more kind of active engagement in their education. And that's not to say we have to make the shift in here, but I wanted to share that perspective with the board in case you have a leading, a preference or thoughts between the use of student or the use of a learner as you consider the mission statement.
Cat's handed up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cat, I can't see it in the background, so please.
I'm such a good student, I wait till I'm called on. Um, like, um, I, yes, and I think, I think, Nick, you, you got some feedback from some of our esteemed founding members of Pima Community College. And I, and I really liked their feedback. And may I read the, the mission statement, which is very close to what you have. But I'm, I'm going to read what their input was, because I don't want to take credit for it. But again, it's, it's short and punchy, and it includes lifelong learning and diversity. So replace the, this, the for both statement with, PCC is an open admissions institution within a diverse Pima County community setting, providing comprehensive educational opportunities that bolster student success and lifelong learning.
It's not exactly punchy, Cat.
Um, yeah, it's a lot, but it, it hits, it does hit some important words.
Yeah, we gotta cut that, we gotta shrink it that down a little bit, though.
Shrink it down, but those, but if we can include, because you have open admissions, this is good. The word diversity, diverse should be in there. Lifelong learning, student success and lifelong learning. I think flexible learning opportunities for all can be more, more precisely focused on, you know, student success and lifelong learning, perhaps. So I just wanted to just support our, the inputs that, that we all received. And again, they, they also asked that we look at, which we, which you already have, the words affordability, which we can place in the vision or, or elsewhere, but that's, yeah. But I also love the every student, every day, every goal piece, that's, that's really good, thanks.
Any additional comments from the board at this juncture? Okay, okay.
All right, okay, thank you.
Before we go, Nick, Nick, I just would say, I think, thank you for mentioning that, because when I got the email, I thought they wanted to, I thought they were suggesting replacing mission one with that statement. But I think using that as a way to sort of merge our, what we have here under for both, I think we might be able to come, come up with something that's got a bit more punch, but hits all the notes that we want to hit. And I would agree that the for all is a little weak at the end there.
That's great, thank you for the input. And we appreciate all the comments where people have reached out to us. And we've been trying to engage with different stakeholders who we know are particularly interested in these statements. And we will continue to do that as we revise the statements and make changes to ensure that the framework that we have in the end fully represents the direction of the institution, the services we provide and aligns with the expectations of the community that we serve.
And Dr. Richmond, could you just talk a little bit about the choice of the phrase educational hub?
Oh, absolutely.
I can, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
I think I'm the one who put it in there at some point. We, we talked a lot about, and I think in part this resonated with some of the things that Lee may have said, and I'm sorry if I'm mischaracterizing it or misremembering it. But we had talked a lot about in the strategic planning team, how if we, if we were to think about this without necessarily having to think in words, what would, what would Pima Community College be? And we really thought of it as a place where people would come, and then they would go, and then they would come, and then they would go, and they would, almost like a gas station or something, and fill up on, on excitement and knowledge and fuel and, and, you know, certificates or whatever, and then go off and go do stuff. And if we thought about what the future really held, you know, I've heard, I've heard the word engine be, an engine, an educational engine or something like that. We said, we, we did hub, and I, and I think, I don't want to predict sort of, but it does kind of feel a little passive, right? Like, is we're just kind of a thing that sits here and waits? And I don't think that that's exactly right either. But that was kind of how we got to it, I think, Nick. I'm not sure if you remember anything else or wanted to add anything else to that.
Yeah, that was, I would agree with that completely. And one thing I would note is the word hub kept coming up through a series of different meetings that we had, that connection that we provide, that both connections with the schools, with the community, with business, with industry, and an ongoing lifetime connection with our students, so that we don't have a student who graduates and leaves, you have a student who graduates and comes back to Pima through their career, or they need to kind of learn different skills or progress in their career. We did discuss this earlier in the week in a cap, conversation with cabinet. And one word that was proposed by Dr. B, if I recall correctly, was catalyst, which is more an active term about what we do within our community. So this is absolutely a statement that we're going to take another look at, based on the input that we've received, to kind of wordsmith this and ensure it. So this is absolutely a statement that we're going to take another look at, based on the input that we've received, to kind of wordsmith this and ensure it really captures. The the key themes that we need to make sure is reflected in this statement. But yeah, in terms of the background for hub, it's one of the words that keeps coming up, but it's not quite the right word for in here. Are there any other comments on the mission before we move to the last section of the framework?
Or if I may, Nick, can I say?
Your hand is up still, does you still have a question or comment? I think that no is the answer.
Well, I guess, did we get the idea of that right in for the, to the board members, the idea that that's, that's, if even if hub or catalyst or whatever, or engine aren't exactly the right words, but is that concept? Something that you would approve of or see or see PCC as as being?
I think it's interesting that we don't say community college. I mean, is that, is that by design or is that, I'm just curious? Again, that's sort of the educate, why we chose educational hub as opposed to just saying what we are. I'm just sort of curious.
I would say.
I guess it's in our name, I mean, it's, it's clearly part of the mission.
Absolutely, and one of the things that we keep in mind, depending on the freight, the phrase we pick, for example, for vision is mentioned there as a community college. And one of the challenges we have as we think about this framework is we don't have to mention everything in every statement. So it's, what belongs in which statement, which is in the vision, which is in the mission. But I mean, absolutely, we are a community college, so that's something that we can think about in terms of the language vision.
I like hub. But I would say that instead of we are in open admissions, we are the. Because I don't know if there's another one in Pima County, is there?
I don't think so. No, there's the external competitors, as you mentioned, the online institutions, but obviously a key function we have is serving this community.
I have a question. Go ahead, please. Would arguably the mission statement be the more go-to? Thing rather than the the vision statement? And if so, I would think that maybe instead of we just put Pima Community College as an open admissions educational hub. I like hub, too. I like the concept and the idea that we are focal, we are the center of education when you come off a Speedway, you know, downtown campus. And 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 that way, it, I think the word community needs to be in there somewhere as well. So that way you have Pima Community College. And and or it could also go at the end, opportunities for the entire community, lifelong learning, lifelong learning opportunities for the for the. Community might make it more, make for a more solid mission statement, if in fact the mission statement is what most people, if they're going to read one, they're going to read the mission versus the vision, I would think. But I might, I could be wrong.
I would say you're entirely correct. The mission is the most commonly referred to statement within these frameworks, and that's why we put more detail into this. I would also note. I like KPIs, obviously, with my data role at the institution. And the mission is typically the level where you build in accountability. So this is where we'll build in metrics to hold ourselves accountable that we are fulfilling the mission that we have committed to. And that's another way in which this statement becomes particularly important. And we can leverage data tracking and accountability to ensure we really are moving in the right direction in these different priority areas as highlighted here. All right, let's move on to the last section within the framework. This is our behaviors. This is our how, so as we fulfill our mission and work towards the vision for the institution, how do we engage in that work? And what behaviors do we model that really reflect the experience that our students, the community, and our colleagues can expect for us? Now, I should make a little note about the language here. So we're terming these behaviors. Now, these are kind of comparable to the values in the current system, and some people still use values as a term for this. We chose behaviors, though, because we want these to be very action-based. We want these to encourage, these to encourage kind of those who have worked at the institution to engage in these behaviors. As we work with students, as we work with the community or each other. So we don't want them to be kind of dry and sit on a shelf and no one really uses them. We want them to to prompt action and kind of how we engage in business. Now, this is somewhat lengthy, Anthony and I will kind of alternate our way through this, but this is what we have, so our behaviors. We talked about simplifying these into a few key topics to make them easier to remember, say, three or four items. But we really had a lot of different themes that emerged through this. So we have instead gone for an approach where the first letter of each of these spells out the word choices. We will have choices, right, in how we engage in our work. I should say, the behaviors came before the selection of the word choices. So that kind of drove our choice. As opposed to us starting with a word that we liked, which is not what we did. And but as we have this here, so we champion these behaviors that exemplify the spirit of our college to foster a compassionate, productive educational environment for our whole community. Every member of the college community is encouraged to commit to equity and social justice. So meet each student where they are and seek to improve equity in our community through every decision that we make. Before I hand over to Anthony to talk about the next one, we chose this language very specifically. We didn't want to just say equity, we wanted to commit to equity and social justice. We want people to take action, think about this, and and follow through on our kind of focus on the diverse population that we serve. Anthony?
Great, and the second one, the H, have frank, open conversations and give each other the benefit of the doubt. Act earnestly, ethically, and value integrity in everything we do. And as I recall from our site visits where Nick and I went to every site and talked about the current mission. This, being able to be open and honest with each other resonated at a lot of the sites. It was in a lot of the feedback that we got. And so this is in part where this value came from, oh, sorry, this behavior came from.
And then we have open up to change and endeavor to serve our students and the community by soliciting, valuing, and using their input. This is really to encourage employees to be open to new ways of doing things, to listen to our key stakeholders. And be open to the ideas that they bring forward as we work to improve the institution.
And innovate, and and I think some of these behaviors aren't necessarily things that we don't do already, because I do think that as a college, we are very innovative already, but it is something that I think we want to continue to do. Actively seek new ways of serving our students and bring creativity to everything we do. Do not be afraid to take risks.
Then we have challenge our processes, assumptions, and the status quo to remove barriers and find more efficient ways to operate. And again, this isn't because we have bad processes or the status quo in certain areas is necessarily a bad way of doing business. But we hear this less now, but it's not unheard of, working with different areas of Pima for the response to be, but that's how we've always done it. And how we've always done things may not be the best way moving forward. We need to kind of push back, we need to ask questions. And we need to respectfully ask questions about the status quo to ensure that we're really engaging in our work in the way that is best to support the success of our students.
Evaluate our effectiveness, assess outcomes regularly to champion what has proven to work well, and direct resources to the areas in greatest need of improvement. And this came out of, you know, the desire to, you know, keep making sure that what we're doing is working, and when we find something that is working well, to help spread that innovation throughout the college. Or when we see that something isn't working well, to, you know, figure out how to make it work better.
And then the final one is serve, provide outstanding service to our students, the community, and each other. Work closely with employees, employers, corporate and nonprofit partners, schools, and government agencies in the service of our students. And this is really recognizing that every single one of us is in a service role. We all serve our students, the community, different units of the institution, and we really wanted to focus on that as a priority within the behaviors. So with that, that's a full list of what we currently have in terms of the how the. College operates to fulfill our mission and make progress towards our vision. And I would like to open this up to feedback from the board.
Is there feedback? Ms. Ripley?
Uh, yes, excellent, I think we're coming to the end of it, I think this is our last piece of it. So somewhere, and perhaps in the behaviors piece of it. I would like to see even a reference to staff and faculty. Because, you know, we as, you know, board members and administrators are the ones, you know, for the most part, crafting the the mission and the vision and the behaviors. And I think it's in large part to attract our students, but also to attract and keep faculty and staff quality, faculty and staff, to ensure that they are also valued and heard. So I'm not sure, because I I kind of, I kind of get that the behaviors thing is, I get it, but I maybe it could be worded so that. It addresses the fact that faculty and staff are also part of this, every member of the college community, so I'm assuming that's staff and faculty and administrators. But I'm not articulating articulating this very well, but somehow in all of this, some reference to faculty and staff, does that make sense?
Absolutely, thank you.
Are there any other comments? I particularly like this as a way of framing it, I love that it's very active, and I think these really enumerate. You know, really, the the hows of, you know, how we get there.
All right, that's great, thank you all for your input on this. So I have one last thing I would like to mention today. Before I move on from this, so I'd like to extend a thank you to the strategic planning team who've been working extremely hard on the development of these statements. And thank you to those people who've engaged with us, be they other employees, students, community members, to share their perspectives on this. It's through gathering broad input that we are going to get to the strongest place in terms of this framework. So thank you to everyone who's been involved. The last thing I would like to mention is the 2021 Futures Conference. So we have four events planned, the first is coming up this Friday. And the topic on Friday is largely going to follow the same kind of things that we have spoken about today. But this will be an opportunity for us to hear input from community members, from students, and from employees to further shape these statements. And then, as listed here, we have three other to our events running in parallel with the strategic planning process to, again, ensure we're engaging different stakeholders in that process. And with that, that reaches the end of our presentation for today on this topic. Thank you all very much.
Dr. Richmond, I want to just say thank you for your leadership in this and the entire team, and for everybody being on the call to really talk about. You know, the the process, and then, you know, the the really remarkable work that you've gotten, you know, the fewer the words, the harder it is to get there. So, you know, thank you for, thank you for your leadership. And then, and then, just so we understand, could you just give me a little, could you provide to the boards a little more clarity about when this will come back to the board? When will there be additional opportunities for our input before we have a final, a final version and sort of what's the time, what's the timeline?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. My goal is to bring this back to the board no later than April for adoption and approval. And the reason for that timeline is we'll be bringing forward the strategic plan in May. And I'd like to ensure that we have the completed review and finalized statements by April. If there are other times when the board would like to see these developing statements. Please let us know, and we can ensure that there is opportunity for that before that date in April. Then, as I say, once we have this in place, this is in part guiding the strategic and planning work. And our plan is to bring that new plan, sorry, terrible phrasing, to the board in May.
So I would maybe recommend that we we make sure that this is a, an information, not an information item, but a report, maybe at the March meeting. I I think it's important that there be an ample opportunity, you know, I don't want to. I just don't want to end up where at the April meeting, we're trying to wordsmith, and we're changing all of the work and all of the input that's come through. So I think the more opportunities we have for sort of those early discussions that we really have a final product, the better we will all be, because I don't want to. You know, be changing the mission of the institution, you know. You know, which I think can become a frustrating experience for everyone, based on limited past experience. So if that works, I think Chancellor Lambert, do you think that, does that, is that suitable for you or?
So, Mr. Chair, what we will do is, every upcoming regular board meeting, we'll just do an update on this. That way you'll get a five-minute update along the way and an opportunity to to let us know with each iteration if there's pieces that you think should be included, leading up to that final approval. So we we can do that, and Andrea, will you make make a note of that? Also, I just want to be able to recognize the committee. The committee consists of faculty, it consists of staff, and it consists of administrator. So it's a great mix and balance of all of our employees at the college. So this is not, I just want to be clear, it's not a board or administration-driven process. This is truly all employees involved in the crafting of this, what you're.